All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Marcia, give me a real call, please.
Brian.
Eric.
Justin.
Eric.
John.
Eric.
Eric. You. Go ahead, and anybody have any questions about the twelve seventeen meeting at this point?
It looks like there's a lot of stuff out there. There's a lot on the consent agenda. That's just a formality that we do. We're trying to keep it as light as possible.
Yeah, so I'm just all started.
I don't think it's gonna be a two minutes seventeen second thing, but.
Sometimes you gotta put in the hours.
Where's West Haven Ridge number two?
It's south. East. It's um up a north Cascade Road. It's almost exactly two miles from here. And it's per ordinance, we review all any changes in the the Platte surveys, take them through planning and zoning, which they did Monday.
Okay.
Um, what they're doing is just parcelling up the land. Apparently, the last surviving parent passed away, so the children are getting.
Okay.
Share of the land.
It's inside the city limits?
No.
No.
Two miles out.
Uh.
So we just do this as a courtesy.
I got you.
Any other questions?
Good dude. All right, good.
All right, moving on to apartment head discussion. Stacy?
I don't have a lot.
Oh, that's fine.
Just kind of be basic. We're obviously getting into our busy time of the year. Memberships going up. A lot of people using the facility going up, tournaments starting, all the, all the good things, so.
Uh, the floor.
Yeah.
Floor.
That guy come in?
So the stuff's ordered, so it is not done yet. As soon as we get the stuff in, we'll schedule the floor.
Okay.
So it'll be two weeks from whenever it comes in, so that we can actually book off times, because it's packed at the back, schedule wise, two weeks out, so.
And he's keeping it, right? Once it comes in?
So I believe you guys were talking about the gym floor, correct?
Right, yeah, the test, the test spot.
Yes, correct. So he ordered both, but yes, so that he is keeping it till.
Super.
Is there another floor we should be asking?
Track floor.
Track floor.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but yeah, no, that's, he's gonna keep that until after winter.
Are any update in the conversation with NICC or Clark about baseball fields?
No, um, when I was talking to him last, they said they're gonna bring the head of the conference out and take a look at both fields. Um, both baseball and softball fields, both here and Farley, just kind of look and see like if how they, how they stack up, are they, what would need to get done in order to play?
And ICC is bringing people out.
Correct, correct. Um, so he's kind of gonna wait to, to see. I think softball field, that's the distance of the fence, that's the netting behind the fence. I think it's supposed to go straight up instead of over, that's uh, bullpens, it's, I mean, there's gonna be a list of stuff that would have to get done before, yeah, before they technically meet all the specs that they require.
They're still pushing to next season, next fall?
There, yeah, yeah. My understanding is they got over half the team already. Um, made commitments, I think the last I heard it was like fifteen kids, at least.
Fine, this spring or next spring?
Fall.
Fall.
Yep, yep. So.
For both softball and baseball.
So baseball's the only one I heard updates on. I don't know if they're in the same space for softball. I don't actually know if they have a softball coach yet. Do you know, Tom? I haven't heard. It's all about baseball. I haven't heard about softball. That's not to say they don't, I just don't know for sure.
Uh, Dean, go ahead.
Sure, not a whole lot. Um, just kind of in between seasons here, so making the conversion, getting stuff ready for winter. Wrapping up some of the outside things, um. Trying to get some meter switch outs done. Um, just kind of hit the Royal Oaks area at this, at this point in time. Um, made real good progress, I think, got thirty done last month, so made real good progress. I'm not getting moved over to the smart points and stuff like that, so people are real responsive, which is appreciated, but uh, anything more than that, not really.
Where are you hitting that process? Yeah, how much of the community is left? The smart point switch over, where, what percentage are you at?
I would say we probably got anywhere from two twenty-five to two fifty remaining. So we're probably two thirds done.
You have a date on when you think you want them done by? Or are you just trying to?
Three weeks ago.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, you know, weather, weather permitting, obviously, you know, you know, and that's kind of why, you know, I've been knocking these out the last few weeks, you know, hitting them pretty hard, but obviously, we have to take a break, come in month one, month end, read time, so uh, yeah, it'd be nice to get it done by spring. But, you know, again, it's just, we're basically using this fill-in work, and it's kind of a one-man job, basically, because we got one tablet and one reader, so I mean, there's not really a whole lot more that we can do, but, and along with that, you know, the people have to be responsive as well. And it's been good. Basically, every door I've been knocking on up there, you know, they're either, you know, setting up a date within a couple days, or date and time within a couple days, or, or, you know, inviting me in to get a date here.
Nice, nice.
Good.
Where are we at on the DNR reporting thing for the incoming water lines? The water lines that serve the houses?
The lead, the lead survey, that's done, that was in October.
Okay.
Yeah, and along with that, there was no concerns here in the city. If you asked, everything's more, more current here in the city.
Good.
Yeah, so we, we don't have no lead issues.
We met all their requirements for reporting.
Okay.
Anything else?
All right. Chief.
Uh, the only thing I got for you is the holiday parade, uh, well, Santa with cookies, that's coming up December nineteenth from six to seven, and then the parade is following afterwards, probably around that seven o'clock mark. Uh, that's where us fire department, and if there's any flows I want to go behind, usually there's like one or two. We'll just hit the subdivisions, hit the streets and with Santa and Miss Close. If it's a place out, right?
Blow my cover.
What's that? Today would be an amazing day for a break.
No.
Be awful.
Yeah, so that's, that's the only thing that's coming up for.
How do we know if somebody is wanting to participate?
They just line up.
Just line up. There isn't any, okay.
It's in the news. We try to hit about every subdivision there is. We can't obviously hit everybody around the area just because there's cul-de-sacs. Uh, but we try to hit every road within somebody can go, you know, at least drive to a certain area, but we try to hit every road. And we did release the map, I think Shawnee did today.
She did.
Okay, yep.
Awesome. Anything else for the chief? All right. We will move on to outside city limit utility rates and Heidi.
She's on the call.
Heidi, you there?
I'm coming on right now. How's everyone doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. All right, so I believe the council's received a little bit of information. I just wanted to provide some additional color on um, what rates look like from the outside user standpoint, um, and as an overall, basically as the overall fund. Um, so I do have an expenditure summary. I do apologize. The first one that came out was based off of that two hundred percent um, increase. Um, I just want to make sure you, um, you know, the a hundred and seventy-five percent increase is the one that showed kind of that deficit. Um, if rates did increase to that two hundred percent, we're showing that um, you know, based off of the percentage of number of users, um, we would show that increasing from one hundred and fifty percent to a hundred and seventy-five percent, um, uh, gets them, gets them pretty close to an even, uh, going up to two hundred percent, uh, gets them above, you know, where they're at. So just to give you a quick summary, um, I've taken a look at um, water operating expenditures, um, current water debt, um, and then some estimated numbers for capital expenditures. Um, and taking into account, based off of the number of users, um, that are outside, taking that percentage um, based off of last year, um, that ten percent obligation, um, was about eighty-five thousand. And the revenue from the Thunder Ridge outside users was eighty-one thousand, so slight deficit there. Um, and then, actually, the sewer was just right about on, uh, taking into account the operating expenditures, debt, and some estimated capital expenditures going forward. Um, the deficit was two hundred dollars, so that tells me it's probably right around um, on that mark. Um, the other part that I kind of wanted to note out there is that, uh, this city does have some general obligation debt. Um, that is paid back with tax increment finance dollars. Um, so that is not in, that is debt that's paid back by the TIF from the TIF, and then it's, it's an obligation of the community members, um, in the city of Piasta. So I've added that as you know, just a gauge so you can see of all of the sewer, all the water utilities, all of the debt. Um, and taking that times that ten percent too, which, um, through twenty thirty-six is about thirty-five thousand dollars, so taking you up to that a hundred and seventy-five percent gets revenues, um, just about six thousand dollars shy of that ten percent obligation of all of the water and sewer, um, capital, capital and debt going out there forward. So um, just wanted to give you that type of a color. Um, I know there'd be some questions on what a break even is and um, you know, going from one seventy-five, it's probably about one seventy-seven. Um, if you went up to that two hundred percent, it would add about thirty-four thousand in revenue. Basically doubling, you know, from going from one fifty to one seventy-five, doubling that revenue again. Um, you know, and it would add an additional thirty-four thousand that, um, could be used for a reserve. Um, so that's kind of like what we're looking at from an expenditure standpoint.
Can we load that expenditure summary sheet up here and just have, can you walk us through the different line items? I just want to make sure I'm tracking what it all is. The one that you sent us.
Oh, okay. Would you like to share that, share that, or?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I can give you access to share, if you want to share.
I just think we should have it up on the screen and we can walk through it.
Oh, um. Let's see, I guess I'm, I'll have to, it says I have to send a request.
I just allowed you, I mean, I'm sharing my screen, but I just allowed you in. I should.
So basically, what we're looking at here again is the water operating expenditures, debt and capital, sewer operating. Can everyone see this? Super operating expenditures.
What's in the bottom right corner? I just want to make sure I'm looking at the same document you are loading. The G O, two thirty?
Yes, two thirty.
Okay, and this is the one with the hundred and seventy-five percent?
Yeah. Yep, and so the other one that we, that you initially saw said two sixty, two sixty-four, something like that, which basically doubles this, th- these, this increase here, so um, that was just a, a quick error on my part, as we were, we were running some reports and, um, I accidentally Excel didn't copy it over correctly for me, so. Um, but this is basically showing that if, you know, if you increased a hundred and seventy-five percent, this is what would be expected to come in from revenue from sewer and water. So we're looking about thirteen thousand, almost fourteen thousand in the water, and twenty thousand in the sewer. Just to quickly go over this again, um, just looking at expenditures from last year. Um, also, the city has, um, normal capital expenditures and repairs that we plan for outside of that, so I've put in some conservative numbers in there, um, that the city needs to plan for. Um, you know, every year there, they do vary. Um, but, you know, in the years that it varies and it's higher, we see some, we see some slight deficits in your uh, ending cash balance, and then the years that you don't meet that, then you have some slight growth in those. Um, we can't, you know, we don't really know how much each of those expenditures are gonna cost, but, um, looking at the past years and um, where things have been, I put some, some estimates there.
So the ten percent is based on ten percent of the users, right, or outside city limits? So that's where we're saying ten percent obligation to the, to the overall water fund.
Yeah.
Base rate and debt repayment and capital.
Yes.
Okay.
So Heidi, when you talk about the water debt and the sewer debt there, those numbers, what, what type of, what does that all include?
So currently, right now, the water debt, um, there is a, um, just let me pull up this, so I'm referencing it correctly. So in the water, uh, currently, there are, um, three general obligation debts, the twenty fifteen, the twenty seventeen, and the twenty thirteen. Um, that are paid by the water. They actually have the general obligation backing to them. But the water fund makes transfers to the debt service fund every year, so the, so the water fund's actually paying for that.
And that, that number here is ten percent of that?
Yes, ten percent of that total.
Obviously, same with the sewer?
And then the sewer, that includes, um, that includes the, uh, six point five million, uh, for the wastewater treatment plant, and then the additional, uh, the additional five hundred and fifty-five thousand that we had to issue for that as well. Um, that's the payments for that twenty-year period.
Not again, as the, the ten percent?
Ten percent, yep, ten percent of that, it's, I've taken basically the, the total of those numbers and taken ten percent of it. So, um, that's the assumption there.
Then the, 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 uh, debt paid off in twenty thirty-six, what is, what is that?
So that's the general obligation debt, um, where there was, uh, the highway twenty, uh, the highway twenty lift station sewer project, which is um, on the general obligation and paid partially by debt service and partially by, um, TIF.
See, that, that's the bottom, the G O, yeah, this, all this part.
Basically, I've just taken all of the expenditures that are related to the sewer, sewer and water, and any debt that's related to sewer and water. And, and taken that number by the ten percent. Um, to, to keep it as, as simple as possible, I know that there are some debts that are outstanding that had a higher percentage that, um, maybe benefited or were the, you know, was the reason that that debt went into place, but to kind of keep things simple and to kind of show you a picture of where, you know, how it's funding it from an entire picture, which, um, you know, the city has to make sure that you're funding the entire picture. I've looked at it from that ten percent standpoint. Um, is where I kind of came up from that. Uh, we could kind of look at it from about a million different scenarios, but, uh, to keep it as clear and concise. Um, I've, you know, just wanted to show you from that kind of a clear standpoint.
Heidi, make sure that I understood what you said. Basically, the, the water and the sewer funds are being, they're, they're paying, they're paying the debt on their own by the, the revenue we're generating in the funds, which is including all users, right? You said it's backed by the general obligation debt, so if for some reason our funds fell short, the general obligation debt would be making, would be making up the difference, and that's entirely by the citizens of Piasta.
Yes, that's correct. That is correct, yep.
Water funds that are including citizens of Piasta and people outside the, the city limits are funding their portion of the debt. So now if we look at the ten percent, is the ten percent that the, that the people outside the city limits are, are paying toward it? It's in a deficit at a hundred and fifty. It's in a, in an annual deficit of about thirty-five, right, at, at the hundred fifty, right? And you think it breaks even at about a hundred and seventy-seven?
Yes.
Okay.
So Heidi, I know we spoke, uh, over the lunch hour a little bit, and I did, you didn't have a lot of time. Were you able to pull any of those numbers for the inside the residential and the commercial?
Yes, so if you're looking at it from a, you know, you know, we're looking at from the percent of users, um, there's, um, obviously, when we look at it from a percent of users, the, um, residential's would be at a, at a deficit. Um, the reason being.
Inside the city limits, or is it a deficit?
So commercials making up the.
Right.
Correct. Yes, especially from a, a user standpoint. Um, the way the rate, rate structure is set up is it is set up, um, a little bit more highly on those who use the systems. And the reason being is because of your, your industrial users are high-end users, so we want to make sure that they're, um, since they use a higher percentage of the system, they're paying a much higher obligation as a, as a percent of users, if that makes sense.
I want to make sure, I want to make sure I understand, so the outside users are at a deficit, the inside the city limit residential is at a deficit, and the commercials?
Makes up.
Makes up the difference?
Yes, as a, yes, as a percentage of users, correct.
As a percentage of users, but not as a percentage of consumption?
Yes.
Right.
Correct.
Are you able to say, I know it was last minute, I asked you for it, are you able to send us that information?
Um, I would like, um, I'd like to review and double check some of these numbers, but I can send you those, um, based off of a percentage of, um, users. I can send that over this week.
Same as what you sent us on the.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. It's gonna be interesting to take a look at.
Um, I did send, send something that showed like basically kind of how the revenue is, is, which answers some of that question of hey, where do, are we in a deficit? Um, but it basically kind of breaks down how um, how the, how the dollars are actually built into, um, the water in the sewer. So you, if you have that a hundred and fifty percent scenario, I can kind of step through that. Um, I'll try to make this a little bigger. Are you seeing this one as well?
Yeah.
Yep.
This is the one fifty that you're looking at?
Yes.
Yeah, walk us through how these numbers are built.
Yep, so basically what I have is your current, uh, everybody's current sewer and water rates here. So here's their base rate, so that that rate that is coming no matter what, and then the flow rate is the rate per thousand. I have the number of users, the estimated consumption I'm planning for this fiscal year, which is very similar to last year. And then basically just taking some math to say, okay, here's what we estimate the revenue to be based off of the base rate. And then based off of the consumption rate, and then having an estimate of, um, what we expect that revenue to be. And then I have the exact same thing down, except for with the sewer and water rates, um, with that, with, um, what we expect the revenue to be for the sewer. So this is where we get those percentages of, um.
On the right side, no?
Yep, so as a, the outside users are about twelve percent of the revenue. Commercial industrial is thirty point nine, and residential is fifty-seven point two. And the percent of users is ten percent, eight percent, uh, for commercial industrial, and eighty-one percent for residential. And then the consumption numbers are eight point four percent for outside users, and you'll see, uh, this is where we kind of showed where that deficit would come from and where the commercial's paying for it. They account for thirty-nine percent of the consumption, and residential's about fifty-two percent of the consumption. Then I've just taken some average residential bills, average outside bills, average commercial industrial, uh, bills and their usage. Um, obviously, the commercial industrial is much higher. Um, the difference between the average residential use and outside usage is it's thirty-two hundred for the average residential and thirty-nine hundred for the average outside user. The percentages were very similar, um, slightly different in the sewer, but I would say, um, very similar. And then I just put a scenario together that if the council was looking to do any sort of increase from one fifty, um, how that changes, um, the percentages of revenue. Too much. So if you go from, um, one fifty to one seventy-five, the outside users goes from about twelve percent to thirteen point seven percent. Um, and then the commercial and industrials goes down slightly. Users and consumption, I'm assuming that all stays the same, but the only change would be is, um, a percentage increase on that outside user.
Yeah, Heidi, there was some talk last meeting, um, about the, we, we fund most of our, not all of our pro, uh, sewer water projects through the SRF loans, is that correct?
Uh, the sewer ones, that is correct. Um, it is, it is planned that the water tower project will be funded through the SRF program. And then also funded through water rates. The, the good thing is, is that the majority of the, the majority of your, um, the twenty thirteen and the twenty fifteen loans will be paid off. Um, and with the twenty seventeen outstanding. So, um, I'm just predicting and hoping, um, that it kind of all times together that the new payment for the water tower fits in with as your payments are, um, paid off for the uh, outstanding debt. So hoping to have minimal, um, adjustment, at least from that standpoint.
Going forward, is there anything that would keep us from getting an SRF loan?
Um, there are some requirements, um, and Piasta has, um, with your engineers, they've taken a look at this, but, um, they are usually, they have to be projects that are mandated or requirements and can't be solely due, um, to growth. Um, with all of the projects, the current, the projects that you've had, they've met those standards. Um, with each project going forward, your engineers would be, you know, evaluating that and seeing if that is an option. Um, it has been helpful, especially with your large wastewater treatment plant. Um, and then this water tower, to be able to spread that, you know, this payment, um, over twenty years. Um, I don't like to go much longer than that, um, just because of useful life type things, but it's been able to, you've been able to do large infrastructure projects and spread them out through, um, twenty years. Um, SRF um, has had some of the lowest interest rates, um, available, um, in recent years. So if something were to change from that standpoint, we'd kind of look at different options, but, um, at this point, it's, it's the recommendation going forward.
So if we'd have a major i- issue anywhere, that would typically fit the, the bill for SRF loans?
Yes, typically, yeah, typically, any, any, any normal water sewer, um, treatment, facility, updates will meet those requirements.
Thank you.
So is it a correct assumption then, as some of the general obligation debt falls off, that the future go-forward debt, general obligation debt's gonna be replaced in these funds with SRF debt?
Yes.
And SRF debt, we're gonna pay through the water and sewer.
And essentially, yeah, essentially, the g- general obligation debt is outstanding, and, and, and it is backed by that, but as history has shown, the, the city has been making transfers from the water fund to make those payments.
Attention, um.
Other than, other than the most recent, um, the highway lift twenties, highway lift twenty station that I separated, separated out down below. Um, those are all assumed that they are being paid for from the, um, from the water fund.
Okay. Well, let me go back up to the, the big, the big number. The future water project, the cost, we're estimating at four and a half.
Correct.
Million. That's the total cost, but some of that, we're gonna get federal grant money for it, correct?
Yeah, but it's not upfront, we have to pay for it, we get reimbursed.
We pay for it, we get reimbursed. And what's, what's the status that I'm trying to remember? If we were awarded it, or were promised it, uh, when we show a future use?
We were awarded it.
We were awarded.
I do have a call Friday, um, with Congressman Henson.
Yay.
Uh, yeah, yeah, uh, to discuss, I'm sure it's.
Remind me the number, though, was it?
It's one point five million.
One point five. One point five.
Yeah, we requested two.
Right.
And they had so many requests that.
So we're looking at four point five and a repayment grant of one point five. We're looking at a total exposure of three million. Hopefully SRF.
We'll have to borrow the entire amount. And then, right, and then we'll receive that grant. And, and I have to find out the specifics. Is it all one point five at once?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, is that paid back over time or?
Right. So those are some of the questions I, I'm going to get answered.
So at this point, we don't have a super clear picture. Flow period will look like.
Right.
And if our water rates and things will be sufficient in that, that flow time.
Well, that's why we're gonna, we're gonna be working with Heidi on that as well.
Assumed in here again, like, how are you assuming that grant repayment into that debt structure? And these use rate projections, or do we just can't, we can't know yet?
We don't know yet. And then the four point five is still an estimate at this point. And I also have an estimate of the interest rate associated with it as well. So, um. It's, um, I'd rather keep it at that four point five percent or four point, sorry, four point five million at this point. But just because there's so many unknowns that we know. Um, but certainly the city won't borrow for more, um, and we won't have a rate structure. In place that, you know, is going to be over in abundance. Um, I have noticed also that, you know. In the last few years, the water expenditures have been going, going up a little bit faster than. The three percent that, you know, the rates have been going in place. So, um, those are things that. Um, I'm watching for as well. And it's been just kind of one time expenditures that have been kind of, um, costly to the city. Um, so it's, it's all kind of, it's all a moving, it's all a moving piece there. So. I feel confident sticking with the four point five until we know, um, really. The, you know, once the project goes out to bid, um, we'll kind of keep, keep everything from that. Keep our estimates the same.
A sense of timing.
Yeah.
When we'll be going out to bid.
Well, we have that, um, we have a project that's looking at that two hundred acres. That's really going to shift the entire design.
Right.
Of the water tower. Um, I know that Steve Thompson has been in contact with, and I've had a conversation with the, the engineer that's out of Chicago. Um, just so that we can get it tightened up so that we can get the design, get the bid documents, yes.
But it's likely embedded sometime in twenty twenty five.
Oh, absolutely. I would say late spring, maybe late spring, early summer.
So we're twenty twenty five bid or a twenty twenty six construction. Now we're two years from now.
That's eighteen, about eighteen months to construct.
Okay. So within a three year window, it's going to be built.
I would say that's a safe.
Borrowed and paid. And then we're going to have clarity on the federal grant structure and timing of that.
Yes.
In the next couple of years. But four point five assumes we don't get any grant money. That's a conservative as assessment, right?
Yes.
And that's what's built in here now. Okay. By not asking.
Um, it's interesting that, um. You know, that we're looking at, you know, your payments in the sewer that are approximately, you know, two hundred and forty thousand. I'm estimating the payment's going to be about two hundred and sixty five to two hundred and seventy five thousand. So. You know, it's increasing, but not by. A, you know, a ton, um, as that debt comes off. So. Um, you're set up, you're set up pretty well for success there. Um, and then if the grants come in and you're borrowing less. The fund will be set up, set up to, you know, be gaining a little bit more cash. Um, I'm not sure if we'd be really looking at. Rate reductions. Um, we'd also want to just take a look and see, is there any other? Is there any other capital improvements? Down the pipeline before we take a look at any type of adjustment there, just based off of one grant.
Heidi, still here.
This has been helpful?
Uh, well, I, I wish, oh no, no, we couldn't see the information beforehand to go over it, but I have a quick question to you. If we weren't, if we were part of the city of Piasta. What would be happening in regards to rates? How would you fund what you're doing now?
Would be assuming that you were part of it, so you would be funding your portion.
And how would you see that? Am I raising the water rates? Is that what you'd have to do or? Does it? That's, I want to make, understand why we are looking at the extra.
Because we, with the tax money that we would take in would be what would be funding those and we're not taking tax money.
And the use, the payment, the use rate payments. So every, every resident would be, would have the same base rate and use rates. And we'd have a commercial rate. And between those two, we'd have to fund our water and sewer. Right?
Right. We're not funding this project based on the, um, the amount that's above a hundred percent. That we're charging from the outside users.
The reason I asked about the SRF loans is because those loans are paid back by every user.
By use rates.
Every user.
Whereas general.
Chairs, chairs and that cost.
General obligation debt would be paid by Piasta citizens. And their property tax payments. So that's why we're asking those questions about the source of the debt financing.
So you're thinking that the rates, if our rates would go to two hundred percent, that would be in conjunction pretty close to what your residents are paying for taxes. Or is that if you broke that down? You can answer that. Maybe not tonight.
Heidi, did you hear that question?
Understand that question. I don't think it's framed right.
Yeah, so there'd be, there'd be an adjustment in the rates, uh, as the councilman mentioned, there'd be an adjustment in the rates to, um, kind of. Offset any type of, if there is any type of revenue gap. Um, however, there's. However, there, there. If Thunder Ridge was annexed in, there'd also be, um. An influx of tax revenue, um, from the new valuation that came in. So. There'd be some, there'd be some adjustment and, and analysis that could be made. You know, whether. Um, whether there'd have to be an adjustment of rates or if possibly the general fund could, could, um, offset maybe some of the. Um, additional costs that would kind of shift from sewer water to general fund. So. Uh, there'd be a lot of analysis there to kind of see what the best, you know, way forward, um, would be, but. If, if, um, Thunder Ridge was annexed in, there'd be a reduction in sewer water rates. But there'd be an increase in your tax bills. So, um, it's kind of, it's, it'd be an off. It, it'd be an offset now, whether, you know, exactly what those numbers look like are going to be based off of each residential's. Value of their home at that point. So it would look different for each, um, individual person.
Yeah, that's what I already said.
The way I think we're, we're structuring it now that we're trying to structure is that the user payments are paying for water and sewers. Begin, and we're getting a funding source that, that, that's such that it's. It's spread across all the users versus just the citizen tax base. We can look at it doing it differently if, if it was structured differently, but it's not. So it's, we're trying to get the water and sewer to pay for themselves, if that makes sense, including their future investments.
And I would like to see that.
Yeah, I understand that. It, it just seems like it'll go back to the two hundred percent seems extremely. Extremely high for our part to put in there. We'll leave it at that for this point.
I would like to see what the. User rates, the user, the user rates, the, the, the consumption and the, the deficit or.
If they were at citizen rates.
Well, what if they're at citizen rates and what the citizens of the residential and the, and the commercial look like? Cause right now we're showing if there's a, a deficit of thirty five thousand dollars, right? What does that look like for the residents?
On an annual basis, yeah.
What does that look like for the residents inside and the commercial inside? My assumption is, and I think Heidi kind of said that. There is a little bit of a deficit of residents on the inside of the city limits, but the commercial, but the commercial is so high.
Commercial's making up their bulk.
My question is, why isn't that being taken in consideration for these users as well?
Because the tax base, the geo fund would be covering that extra. The difference would be coming from property taxes.
But it's not, but the, 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 the commercial is covering it. Which is said that commercials.
The water fund and sewer fund are paying for themselves out of the, out of three categories.
So I, I just wanted to cover and have that conversation.
So the way that it's funded is that. Because you have, because the city of Piasta has a few very, very large users. It is structured in such a way that, that usage. Um, those usage rates are higher so that it fun, so that a smaller percentage of users. Funds a much bigger percentage of the overall fund. And that's, you know, and that's all, that's more in, in a fairness of when you're looking at just a sewer or a water. Because they use so much more of that percentage of the water fund. You can't have a, a, a set rate all the way across the, you know, across the board. Um, otherwise you'd be having those who don't use that much. Fund and pay for so much more than, um, than those who are actually using it. Um, and the thought behind that is, is, is that, um, some of the expansions and some of the actual, uh, needs. Are for a smaller number of, um, users within the water in the sewer. So that's why the structure has been structured that way, which makes so much sense for the city of Piasta, just because. When I look at, um. You know, from a valuation standpoint. The industrial area is about half of, half of the city of Piasta and the other half is, is, uh, residential and that. That those small number of in, industry users, um, use up a lot more of a percentage than just. That one business, uh, does, if that makes sense.
And, uh, Heidi, can you pull up the first spreadsheet you had? So the first spreadsheet, um. Shows the water and sewer. And I'm coming up with a little different percentage in my chicken scratch, but. The, the question I have is that the additional part on the geo debt.
Yep.
Is that, what, so what? What's, what's the purpose, I guess, of that for us? Otherwise, why is that in there? I'm just, I'm just wondering. That was the lift station, correct?
Yes.
That's ten percent, that's ten percent of the lift station.
It's a little bit higher than, it's ten point oh six percent, which matches the.
Percent of users.
Yeah, the users.
So it's ten point six percent, not ten point oh six. I think your first one yet.
Yeah.
You're the first one.
I apologize. I just, I think I just accidentally. Closed it out when I tried to tap on it. So give me a second here.
So we're paying for ten percent of that lift station then, is what you have the calculation?
Correct.
Ten percent of capital, ten percent of consumption, ten percent of.
Did you have that first spreadsheet or?
The other question I'd ask is, you know, we, we have one or two more houses that are going to go up and, and then we're at capacity. The city of Piasta is going to have. Ten houses, twenty houses a year. So that percentage of ten percent, so it's ten point oh six there. I guess that's where I was confused. Instead of ten point six.
Yeah.
But you're, that, that, that percentage, ten percent is gonna.
Over time.
It's gonna go down over the years as you guys build more houses. So I, I get today that, that's what it is. But by charging us two hundred percent today, that's, that's probably infinity. Cause I don't see you adjusting it down.
We did have a conversation about reviewing rates and if we decided to move to the one seventy five, that we would review it every three years. You know, we can, we can set a schedule up. It can be annually, it can be.
And, and John had brought up in one of those discussions too, that once we've met. A certain obligation that that was, we could look at scaling it down at that point.
So, now, what none of this analysis is looking at though is building a reserve. So we're just looking at if it's breaking even for percentage of user base and percent of consumption.
And we can build a little bit of a reserve at the two hundred, but.
Still weren't building much.
Right.
Which just to remind everybody, that means sunk costs are sunk cost. There's not a reserve built into these numbers for other things that might break, which is. The conversations we've had in the.
We've talked about the reserve. We said like, uh, what is it? It's a five hundred thousand, seven hundred fifty thousand. What would that reserve look like? So at the five hundred, five hundred thousand, that would still take fourteen years.
Right. If we wanted to build a reserve. If we were going to build a reserve.
If we were going to.
You gotta go to one seventy seven.
And, and that's assuming you don't use any of the reserve for fourteen years as well, you know, so, um.
Right. All right, I'll take one more question because this is a work session for us, so.
I'm gonna, when we do this and we get stuck with paying more for the water than we should. Based on the original agreement ten years ago. Are we going to then get our twenty eighty agreement that's required by? So we can address how often our rates can go up or how we can address the rates going down. Given the revenue that comes to the city.
Is that a?
The twenty eighty agreement, we have been instructed by our city attorney. It's not necessary.
Well, we happen to want one because the city already signed one on the sewer. Now, and I didn't.
So it's, it's a difference then as, as a requirement or a want.
You started out saying it was required. Must have been a willing party when we signed this.
That we are required to.
Why don't you want to give us any protection that you have to provide us water? You can stop right today and we can't do a damn thing about it.
And I'm aware of that.
So all I am saying from the city or the. Thunder Ridge states is we should have some protection that we're paying an inordinate amount of money, given the fact. That we gave you a million dollar well that you don't.
Okay.
Utilize.
I'm gonna stop this discussion right there because if I, if I hear that well one more time, I mean, we've had that discussion. Fifteen times and.
I understand, but there's.
But no, but it's not a but, there, the well, it doesn't count. Okay, we've been over that. We've already spent, I don't want to redo this. So we're done. The discussion is done. There's no more questions. If the council has questions of Heidi right now, we'll do that. That, that's my decision. If anyone has any questions of Heidi from the council, we will have her stay on. Otherwise, we're going to move forward.
Heidi, if we wanted to build a reserve over some period of time, we'd have to be beyond the hundred and seventy seven percent. Break even in this analysis on the current assumptions.
I think you could build a small reserve at one seventy five. The only reason I say that is. In order for, let me share this one more time.
While you're looking for that, I get a question from.
Yep.
Brian here. So.
This thirty five, oh, go ahead, sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Basically, so this, this thirty five thousand here. Um, since. And unless the city wants to transfer that over. From Thunder Ridge to, uh, to, to you repay back TIF. Or the debt, you know, the debt payment, this could go towards building the fund up.
It's a minus though, right, Heidi?
Right. Right. But it's, it's basically what I'm saying is it's, since it's a general obligation debt that's paid by TIF. If you increase your funds. Here I've got twenty thousand and fourteen thousand, you're going to start building some of that. But this is out, that thirty five thousand is kind of outside of the fund. So you will be building up. Your, your reserves. Slightly, um, but that is if, and that'd be a city decision is if you'd want to repay back. Um, your general fund with that thirty five thousand. If you, if you don't and want to use that towards a, um, reserve fund. Um, or to build up the fund, that would be, you know, kind of the two options to take a look at.
So if we raise this to, to one seventy five, we're able to build based off that, that move there. We're basi- basically be able to build up a reserve. We're basi, basically be able to build up a reserve, correct? What you're saying, overtime.
It should be, it should, if you don't have to use it, um, about thirty, probably should, it would should be about twenty-nine thousand a year.
Right, now, that's, that's reserve, that's money that's being billed just solely from Thunder Ridge Estates. Cause if we move that to one seventy-five, are we only gonna move, are we only gonna use that money for the repairs needed in Thunder Ridge, are we gonna use it for?
Yes, that's, that's.
Were you gonna use it?
Then are we gonna build a fund for inside the city?
We already do that.
Yeah. That's your water fund.
Right, we've never used it though, right?
We have a hundred thousand that we set back every year.
We've never used it.
We've never touched it. And we've worked it in to increase that, to put more aside each year.
Right, we're building a fund there.
So Russ, I know you just want a couple more questions, but that reserve is the ten percent that you're looking is, is just for the Thunder Ridge?
Right.
Yes.
Uh, and your other reserve is what John just talked about.
Inside the city general fund, yep. But you also have to take in the garbage though, cause I mean, I know that's a smaller burden, would the garbage, if we're paying seventy-five percent more, would that go into this fund too? Yes. Oh, why wouldn't it? It's, it's part, it's extra, we're paying extra.
If it go into the garbage fund.
Right, but it's, but it's, why would be there an extra if that should go into a garbage fund?
Because you're an outside user.
Oh, but I think all that extra should go into this fund to pay for this.
Well, that's a decision that we're gonna have to make.
No, we're not there yet.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the council? All right, uh, good, I believe we've already had the public hearing.
We have.
Um, I would like to schedule the first reading of uh, moving the outside rates to one seventy-five percent for the first meeting in January.
Do you wanna do it the seventeenth?
I wanna do it the first meeting in Jan.
All right.
I don't have the date in front of me.
I don't either, but to find out.
Yeah. Is Heidi still on there?
Oh, yes, I am.
Are you able to get us that information that I asked for in the next couple of days?
Yes.
Thank you.
What'd you ask for, again?
I wanna see.
The inside city, that, for it, for city residents.
January fourteenth.
January fourteenth.
Commercial, okay.
Please add that. Fourteen twenty.
That'd be good. If we have it before January, let's distribute it.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, okay. Good. Food trucks.
Do, did Heidi jump on that?
Thanks Heidi.
Yep, thanks Heidi.
Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you very much, have a great night, everyone.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll move on to fiscal year twenty-six budget.
This is a very thirty thousand foot view.
Thirty thousand?
Thirty thousand? I think we're at fifty, so we're getting there.
Well, we're, you know, we're doing really good with, as far as, you know, we've gotten at this point, but we want you to start looking at it now. And then as we update it, we'll make sure that we get it sent out.
Do you have any preliminary questions?
Primarily the, nothing obviously is final, but primarily the biggest thing that is in there, the department heads met with everybody. Kind of put their wish list out there, have different things in that, what they're looking at, I've put some of the other numbers into like wages and some of the other expenses, um, and tweaked a little bit of the revenue, but yeah, it's primarily just like the department head stuff that's kind of been done. And then there's also a calendar out there, so um, if you remember from last year, things changed, and there's a, there's a timeline, there's not a whole lot of wiggle room in there.
Just noisy.
There's not a ton of wiggle room in there, I think there's like one, one thing, so like, we could go push it back a little bit further into April. Um, so we've seen that going in, especially to the levy, um, you know, that meeting with the public hearing and whatnot. Definitely have to be on the same page, so, but anyway, there's kind of a calendar there to kind of give you an idea how we've timed it out, what needs to happen, when.
Yep, uh, the biggest thing that we're waiting for right now is, is the, the amount that we're certified to collect, and that's usually what the first or second week in January, so that really kind of.
So are we, we're just using this year's, this last year's number?
Year's number.
So based on this year's, last year's number, we're projecting seven point four in revenue? And we have asks for nine point four in expense?
Yeah, I don't have any, I don't have any tax revenue in there yet, property tax revenue in there at all.
And there will be some new valuation.
So really, our expense budget is what we should be looking at.
Yeah, just kinda looking at the department expenses.
Don't look at the revenues, actually.
Yeah. I put, updated some revenue stuff, like road use and, you know, some of those things, but I, yeah, we don't have any proper tax dollars in there at all.
We have zero on our wish list for trail system?
So, so when we went through parks.
This is specific to the, the departments, not other projects.
I was gonna say, when we went through parks, we didn't talk, talk that yet. I think that absolutely we want to, just where.
Fucking wish list.
This is for the, for departments, for their departments, this is not, like, you have your, that's part of your wish list.
It's not our wish list.
We get a lot of projects.
I just thought that fell into parks and maintenance somewhere, that would, we'd be seeing it on this ledger.
Stacy has a huge wish list, so you know.
Did you just go to her into making her?
Well, so the, the trail, the all accounts are different than parks and within ACC, I don't know where they are, we didn't discuss that at all. We talked about how we wanted to put trails in, but we didn't say anything about numbers.
Right.
Cause we need to kind of go to you to say, what trails do you wanna look at and what's that number look like? I think the next one we know, we've already had somewhat, you know, some engineering.
Well, we're gonna bring that recommendation out of Parks Committee, aren't we?
A hundred percent.
I mean, for, for sidewalks, next ones to do.
And it kind of depends on what the revenue is and what we can afford to do.
And, and just keep in mind, you know, with the new um, property tax reforms, it's gonna be even uglier. This year, we're at nine point eight percent growth. So we're blowing that six percent and above.
I have to.
Yeah, and also thinking about potentially increasing the levy, so we all have a wish list. But that's, those things cost money, and if we don't wish to increase taxes, then it makes the other things difficult. You know, like, we're still one of the lowest in the area for, for the tax levy, and we can look at our, look at our, our insurance, I cap insurance alone, went from ninety-two thousand to a hundred and thirty thousand. Right now, we're levying for forty thousand of that, we can levy for sixty, almost sixty. So, we'll have to just look at where the numbers are at, and we'll put stuff together for you.
Levy for benefit.
Right, and levy for benefits. In capital projects, those are the levies that don't go against our overall levy, so I think we've, we've never done it in the past.
We're zeros on those now, right? We were not, we don't levy anything.
Right, and I mean, we really need to take a hard look at it, so that we can start building those funds for the trails. And still managing to get some of the things that are on the wish list that maybe becomes more of a need than a wish. So I mean, these are things that we really have to take into, yeah, we really have to take a hard, hard look at it.
And we'll put some numbers, w- once we get the numbers, we can put the numbers, let me stay the same, it's that income look like.
That's we did last year.
Yeah, kinda like last year, we wanna levy even twenty thousand dollars, it may not make that huge of a difference.
But appreciate any feedback that you have at this point.
Okay.
Some of your wish lists.
I need more money.
Yeah, fine.
Fine, more money, it's very simple, one thing. Uh, appreciate the effort so far.
Thank you.
Forward to the continued effort.
Yeah.
Um, yep, are we going to, sorry, are we gonna run through a strategy session?
Goal setting?
Goal setting?
Yeah, that will be budgeted, we'll do that in July, just like we did two years ago, kinda hard to believe it's been two years, but, yeah, that will definitely be budgeted. Um, also something not, that will not be budgeted for FY twenty-six, but definitely for FY twenty-seven, we need to revise our comprehensive plan. And that's gonna be expensive. Um, pricing's coming in anywhere from eight to thirty thousand.
Mostly comprehensive. Partially comprehensive.
Seventy-five percent comprehensive.
Last time that was updated.
Um. No, I, twenty fifteen, I know there was a, a review date on then.
Twenty twenty.
Yeah, and then twenty twenty, so every, it's kind of usual.
That whole water ditch thing wasn't that a comprehensive plan?
Water ditch.
Started. I think that would have been the last year of that.
Which was nineteen.
But if you just look what was done back in twenty twenty and what we are today, it's
Completely different.
Total different fancy.
Yep, for better, for the better.
Uh, we're not gonna talk about food truck permits with Lexi not here, because I value her input on this subject, so.
That was just something that we brought back.
Yes, no, understood, so just, just bump it to January for now. All we can do, I, I know we don't like to, but I don't, I don't wanna do the discussion without.
You want that, that's the January we're setting?
Yeah, just throw it to Jane, sorry. You want anything else?
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, we're done, thanks for coming, everybody.
Um, so I was just talking to them, a little money. Don't want you thinking, grandma?
Rusty, I get copies.